I'm going to call this meeting to order on November 14th, 2019. And I'm going to ask our city clerk to call roll, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. McElroy?
Present.
Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Present.
And I'll call the order to McCracken County Fiscal Court meeting. And need a roll call, please.
Mr. Warholman?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
And Judge Clark?
Here.
We didn't talk about who's doing invocation. You want to choose someone?
Well, Mr. Warholman always does ours.
All right, go for it.
Father, we thank you for the blessings of this day. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve the people of this community. We just pray you be with us as we make decisions to make life better for them. Father, we pray for all our first responders in the city and the county and throughout the state. Father, be with them as they perform the services to make us safe. And we just pray, again, you give them safe travel and be with their families as they release their loved ones to help serve us. Father, again, we just pray you be with us tonight. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, let's stand for the pledge, please.
Oh, there.
Have pledged allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't ask Chief Laird first, but do you mind introducing our guest, Chief Laird? I think we're ready for that, if you don't mind coming on up.
Mayor, Judge, Commissioners, we have Cliff Brown with us tonight. He's with Federal Engineering. He's the part of the consulting firm that has been evaluating our 911 system. And he's going to talk to you tonight about the report that they generated a little over about two and a half years ago. He's going to try to refresh a little bit of that the best that he can. But he's appeared here on some pretty short notice. But he's put together something for us that I think will be beneficial to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, Judge, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We have a short presentation. I know you have copies of the executive summary of the report. The report, if I recall, was like 140, 170 pages, probably having been through the whole thing. But the executive summary does a good job in summing up, not only for the radio system, which we're here to talk about, but also for the other components of the project we were involved with, which was the 911 telephony system and the computer-aided dispatch system for the 911 center. Tonight, we've been through the introductions. I want to go through a brief project history, what the key issues were or drivers for the radio system that we used in putting together this report, cover some of the major project findings that we found. There'll also be some updates, because some of this material is dated, and then some logical next steps. And at the end of that, I'm sure there'll be a few questions. The consulting agreement with Federal Engineering was executed in August of 2016. The RFP for that agreement actually went out in 2015. So the county and the city recognized the need to update these systems at that point in time. The scope was to review existing systems, prepare an evaluation, conduct needs assessments, and develop system requirements for replacement systems, then actually go through the procurement phase with you through an RFP, proposal evaluations, negotiations to a contract signed with the vendor, and then help start the implementation. This was for all three systems that I mentioned. This was for the 911 telephony, the computer-aided dispatch system, and the radio system, which also included fire station alerting and paging. There was also a logging recorder that's usually part of the radio system, but that was pulled out because the other projects had been advanced in time. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. So the approach was, we wanted to do the existing system evaluation, the needs and the requirements for all three of these different categories at the same time. That required a lot of time onsite, discussing this with the users, looking at the equipment, looking at how it operated, and then discussing where did you want to go in the future. From a pictorial standpoint, a lot's been done. When we started this project, all these boxes were in color. So the project has seen a lot of progress. Everything that's been grayed out and has a check mark is complete. The only ones remaining is the CAD system implementation, and that is being completed as we speak. And the radio system procurement, the two blue boxes, and the implementation are still pending. One of the things we need to talk about is, when we put this report together, the middle box here that says procurement meeting and prioritize, we looked at what could be afforded and when. The big issue driving what prioritized the 911 system was the current state of the 911 system. It was in trouble. You needed to replace that. You were lucky to get a grant, and that new system was put in and actually allows for some transfer of automatic number identification, automatic location information into the CAD system, something that was done manually before. So this is the actual screen and computer system that the 911 call taker uses to take these calls. So that was all updated and put in. The CAD system came next, because that was in the next level of priority. We went through an RFP process, made an award, and that's under implementation. The radio system, because of the costs that were estimated, were essentially parked or put on a back burner for a while. So it was a combination of what needs to go first, because it needs to be replaced, it was end of life, and what funds were available. So that was what prioritized those three systems. Questions at this point? When we went through the interviews with the users' agencies, there were certain drivers that pushed us into what needed to be a radio replacement. The key issue was, it was an aging system, and the city and county recognized that back in 2015. The system was put in mid-'90s, late-'90s. There was one upgrade in 2007. Usually you can get 15 years out of one of these systems. The newer systems, a little bit less, because they're computer-based. The system also lacked countywide and in-building coverage, which also puts your first responders at risk, because they can't talk when they go into a building, back into the system. The existing system lacks the newer system features, one of them such as encryption. So for law enforcement, that's a very large issue right now. With encryption, there's no way someone with a scanner can listen in. There was also a lack of interoperability with the radio partners, meaning the surrounding counties and the state, that had already upgraded to a digital system. So that was an issue. There was also issues with system resiliency. Think of this as fault tolerance. If one major piece of equipment failed, it could wipe out half of the consoles or all of the consoles in the control center, or it could wipe out multiple channels of use for the radio system. So a requirement for that would be to build in redundancy and backup equipment so that one of these failures didn't cause a catastrophic failure for the users. Some of the failures, if you had redundancy, would go unnoticed. It'd be transparent to the actual users. Obviously, funding was not immediately available, and that placed the radio system at the bottom of the list for proceeding with the procurement stage. So our view is, the city and county is at risk. The first responders are at risk, therefore constituents and public is at risk. Just as an example, some of this equipment, the consoles were upgraded in 2007. They're probably running Microsoft XP. Everyone knows Microsoft canceled all product support for XP several years ago. So if it does fail, you might be able to fix it and you might not be able to fix it. If you can't fix it, you would have to replace it. And that's where everybody's mind was at back in 2015. We saw the end of life coming up, and we wanted to get ahead of the curve and start pushing forward to a replacement system. The needs assessment, which you have the executive summary of, was completed in a final version in January of 2017. That report for the radio system, it also covered the other systems, the 911 and the CAD. But for the radio, it identified two alternatives. The first alternative was a digital AppCo P-25 system, Phase 1, using six sites and eight channels. The report gets into the details of the technology that was used. An alternative two, which was a digital P-25 Phase 2 system, the difference being, you can have two conversations on one radio channel in a Phase 2 system, so you need fewer channels, therefore less cost. But one of the major assumptions was, three and a half years ago when this report was put together, was that we could reuse 231 portables and mobiles by upgrading them and just buying the difference. There was a total of 583 radios. So upgrading what we had was a good alternative three and a half years ago. We'll get to the implications three and a half years later, what that means. The entire system was designed for expansion purposes and to provide coverage throughout the county for portables on the user's hip, for every user in the county: sheriff, emergency management, police and fire in the city, public works, schools, county fire departments, and I'm probably missing a whole bunch of others that were listed in the report. It was designed for redundancy. It was designed for some of the newer features, such as multiband radios, which gives you much more interoperability. So if your surrounding counties aren't a different frequency band, you can do it with the same radio. They're right, they are more expensive, but you just bought instant communications with them. They come here, you go there, you can still talk to them. So it added a lot to the interoperability. The estimated costs, Alternative 1 was just under 13.6, Alternative 2 just under 14.9. These are list prices as of January 2017. In the report, we've also noted that we would expect at least a 20% or 25% discount off of these. That's what we see throughout the industry. So you could take 25% off of these in January of 2017 and say that was a good estimate for what we expect the system to cost. However, time has passed. Some equipment's gone up, some equipment's gone down, labor has certainly gone up. So these prices are dated and need to be revisited. I mentioned Alternative 1 before and reuse of the existing subscribers. That was a good alternative three and a half years ago. That is no longer an option. The end of life of those units either ended at the end of 2018 or will end at the end of next month. So there will be no vendor support for that equipment, just like the console equipment rolled off at the end of last year. Spare parts will be an issue. Cities already shopping on eBay for replacements, very common within the industry, because you can't buy these radios anymore. You can't find spare parts. Maintenance is on a best effort basis. If you can fix it, they will. If you can't, you're either down a radio or you have to find something on eBay. The assumptions used for the radio system and the alternatives are all dated. Things have changed on your side. Quantity of staff have changed. Replacement radios have been purchased. So all of that needs to be factored into redoing this cost estimate. Essentially, we need to take it, dust it off, re-verify the assumptions, load new vendor pricing into the model, and give you some additional or revised pricing that is up-to-date, where you can make an informed decision as to which way you want to go. As I mentioned, the last three years, technology's advanced. Additional products are now on the market that weren't three and a half years ago. And obviously, vendor pricing has changed. One of the interesting things is, because we never got to the procurement phase or the implementation phase for the radio, in our contract with you, there are still funds remaining. There have been amendments to that since then for other work that you have had us do. So we believe there's some money left in that pot, but we need to work together to figure out how you did the accounting for that and see what's really left, what can be used. And then based on a discussion with you, what you want us to do to refresh this and take you into the procurement phase, is reprice that and see what the difference is. Obviously, you're looking for how to fund this going forward. So that's one of the things we've identified, that yes, you truly need to find funding for this radio system. The different options for how to do this, we've worked with agencies that have done an outright purchase. We've worked with agencies that used financing, either vendor financing or your own financing. And I would recommend in the RFP that we ask the vendors to provide us financing and leasing options. They can be very creative. And that also spreads out the cost for the system over whatever timeframe you want to spread it out over. There's also lease-to-own and straight leases. In a lease situation, or even a finance situation, if the bank owns it, they will ask that you meet certain requirements for maintenance and upgrades of that equipment, because they want to protect their interests in their equipment. So the logical next steps, we see it, is we need to talk about what you want us to do, how you want us to do it, when you want us to do it. And we can re-scope that, put a price tag to it, and then do the appropriate paperwork, see what remaining funds that are available in the existing contract, determine any additional funding needs. Then we can get into actually revising the estimated costs, which would be working with the user agencies again, defining the quantities, defining features and functions, and defining what tier of radio, there's multiple tiers of radio, where public works may not need something that law enforcement or fire needs. Fire has unique needs, law enforcement has unique needs, like encryption. Doesn't mean fire has to have it, doesn't mean that public works needs it. Those things will all drive the pricing. So once we have that, we need to understand how the city and county want to proceed as far as users' needs, functions, features, all the way down to RF coverage. What areas do we need to provide coverage for in this county and city? And then we can update the vendor models and generate revised costs. Once you have that and you have a funding method, then the next steps fall into place where we were when work was stopped three and a half years ago, is an RFP will be developed, we'll work with procurement legal to get terms and conditions right, get this thing on the street. Then you evaluate proposals, once they come back, select a vendor, negotiate, and then implement the system. Rough timeframes between a go, when you wave the green flag to say, please start doing the RFP, to when you have a contract, I would estimate five, six months. You want this RFP on the street for at least two months with the vendors. They'll have questions. We need to have them in for a pre-bid conference where we can answer questions they have. But more importantly, allow them to visit the sites that they might use. 90% of that pre-conference agenda is site visits. So it'll take some time to put together the RFP, work with you on terms and conditions, get the quantities specified, and what comes with each of those, say, portable packages as far as chargers, spare batteries, belt clips, leather holsters, all the accessories that go with it, and what features you want in it, because all of those will drive the price. And once we have a negotiated contract, you'll implement the system. And at that point, we can have another discussion of, do you need our help in implementing the system? There are several phases of that, that we would strongly recommend that. And then we're on the technical side, you don't need us to watch someone pour concrete. But when they submit documents for a detailed design review that says, here's the system, down to every last nut and bolt, yeah, we do that on a daily basis. We can bring a lot of value there. Then at the back end, evaluating testing plans and actually witnessing those tests, we can bring a lot of value there as well. So that's all I had. That gets into questions at this point.
Question. We had a presentation a couple of years ago from AT&amp;T regarding our cellphone service. They talked about some kind of a service that emergency services could use. Are you familiar with that? I don't have any, I didn't really understand it, and I don't remember what they called it, but...
Yeah, there's a, each of the vendors, AT&amp;T, Verizon, the other vendors, cell service providers, provide what's called a push-to-talk solution. And that's more like the old Nextel systems, where you can have a group, and you can have different talk groups set up where you can just key the portable and it goes to that group that you want to talk with. So it's voice-over LTE now that we're into fourth-generation systems, but it's over the commercial network. And you can use that, I would certainly not give that to first responders, that is not public safety grade. Several reasons. One, the sites are not hardened, so if they lose power, they could run generator, if they have a generator. If it runs out of fuel, the site shuts down. If there's a large event, whether it's scheduled or not, big fair, or some sort of natural disaster, you know how the cellphone systems clog up, they get congested, you would have to deal with that. That's a push-to-talk solution that all the vendors have. AT&amp;T has won the contract for FirstNet, and you've probably all heard that.
That was, yeah. That's what it was.
And FirstNet, they're hardening the sites, they're providing more coverage. FirstNet is a data system to allow a lot of applications to run on a data device, whether it's a portable, a laptop with a dongle on it, or an iPad. They are addressing voice, you can do voice-over LTE with that right now. But there are key issues that are still outstanding, such as mission-critical push-to-talk. And that's where the land-mobile radio systems that exist now allow a portable to talk to another portable. They haven't figured that out yet, will they, at some point? But there's also huge technological issues that need to be addressed there, because you're working with a portable that is very high-power, say, three to five watts. You look at your cellphone, it maxes out at a quarter watt. So you're not going to get the range, you're not going to get the penetration in the buildings. And even the people at FirstNet will still tell you, you still need your LMR systems. Will it all come together? I firmly believe they will, but I don't think it's going to happen in my lifetime.
You know anybody who's using any element of, any part of that? Any cities or...
Yeah, we could probably get a list of people that are using the FirstNet system. I know other municipalities use the push-to-talk system, but it's not for public safety or first responders. It's more for city admin.
Doesn't it operate on 700 megahertz? It's got its own.
The...
FirstNet?
FirstNet was designed to operate in a spectrum of 700 megahertz, what was referred to as the D-block. But AT&amp;T has also opened up other frequencies to be involved with that as well. And again, as long as they provide the coverage and it works, I think everybody will be happy. But they're building out the network now. And I think if you go up to the FirstNet site, you can see, you know, the tens of thousands of subscribers that have already signed up. So yes, it is being adopted. There are other applications. There's an AT&amp;T app store for FirstNet. But again, it's all data. I don't know anybody...
I have a follow-up question to that. Would that be included in our RFP? Would a vendor perhaps interpret our RFP to include that solution as a possible option for the lower-use user groups?
Not unless we specifically ask for it that way.
Oh, okay.
A lot of the newer LMR radio equipment comes equipped to operate FirstNet, comes to operate on Wi-Fi, can do Bluetooth. Again, those are features that come with a small price tag, but you, they all have those features. The lower-end portables, like you might give to public works, may not, you might not want to equip them with that. But the other, you know, law enforcement, fire, whoever else you want, you can put that into those radios. The vendors have top-of-the-line radios that will do multiple cell carriers. So it'll do FirstNet plus someone else. And you can use that to extend range. But again, it's not something I would count on, because you don't know, when you lose your LMR signal, meaning the county's coverage, and you go outside that, yes, you can roam over on an LTE signal, whether it's FirstNet or whether it's another carrier, but you don't control that network, you don't maintain it, you don't know how well it's going to All of the major manufacturers also, and we will ask for this in the RFP, make an application that you can put on a smartphone. It will turn your smartphone into a digital P-25 radio. You can do encryption. So you could take it, sit on the beach at Waikiki, and participate in a talk group. I'd have to ask why you're doing that. But the real point of this is, if you have a chief's meeting that's two counties away, ideally, you don't have to take this big radio, you can just use your smartphone, you can monitor what's going on. But again, that relies on commercial cell networks and all the issues that come with that. But we will ask for that. And there's a small licensing fee per user on that. And that's usually for command staff, city officials. It's not meant for first responders on the street.
And the Commissioners, city and county, may or may not know, we, the mayor and I and the city manager and my deputy, along with the chief and sheriff, met with you this afternoon, a pre-meeting meeting. And so I think we, at least in my mind, we kind of got down to some things that looked positive to me to come off of that roughly $14 million price tag that we saw from a couple of years ago. And the things that I saw were that, one, there's a, quite a substantial number of people that participate in the 911 system use portable radios that can function just as well with a $1,000-cost portable as they can with a $3,500, $4,000. They don't need all the extras or bells and whistles or extremely high-level capabilities. The other one is possibly we would have five site, not six, so that would save us $1,000 to $1.4 million off of that price. And then we had some talk about, I think the chief believes that the school system, I think pays a, at least city schools, I believe he said, pay a user fee of some amount to participate in the 911 system. I don't know if that goes abroad to a lot of other agencies or not, but the, I guess the agencies that have their own taxing districts that are not directly under city-county employment, I think it would be fair to ask for them to do so, to participate with a user fee, because they're going to certainly benefit from what we're doing. They have their own tax mechanisms to fund themselves. And, I mean, they got to put a little something in the kitty. It will be of a great benefit to them as well. So that's just a few things, and that's just sort of right off the top. And once we get down digging deep, I think maybe we can find other, other things as well.
Right. One of the things we talked about earlier in the meeting, Judge, was also that this report focused in on the capital costs of new, new systems, and a system replacement. We also recognize that, once the warranty is over, there will be maintenance and upgrades that are required to keep your system operating correctly. And those need to be added into the, the cost equation. And usually, some of the user fees and user costs, like you were talking about for the schools, are used to supplement that, and to assist in the maintenance.
What's the life expectancy of equipment like this now? How many years?
The system itself probably has a life expectancy between 10 and 12 years, you can probably stretch it to 15. What we're finding, though, is the subscribers, the radios, the portables, and the mobiles are in the seven-to-eight-year range. And some of the actual data equipment that goes into it, since all of these systems are computer-based, like switches and routers, are probably in the three-to-four-year range. So what we usually ask for in an RFP is that the vendor provide pricing for the initial capital purchase, and give you a three-year warranty, including hardware refresh as necessary. What we're finding is software advances so quickly, that it outstrips the hardware that runs it. Just like your laptops and cellphones, it's, there's new applications, there's new operating systems, but you can't put it on this old box. The system itself, if you upgrade it through, and maintain it, it'll give you the, the 10 to 15 years. And I would say more of the 10 to 12-year range. But also during those 10 years, we'll also ask the vendor in the proposal to give us maintenance and upgrade costs for years four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. So you'll have that information, and you can either buy it then, or you can buy it later.
So in 10 to 15 years, we'll be doing this all over again?
Yes, sir.
How long does the equipment last that we have now?
The equipment has lasted a phenomenally long time. It was put in in the late 90s, I believe, like 96 or something, maybe mid, mid 90s. The console equipment went through an upgrade in 2007, some of it. So it's been since mid 90s, late 90s. And the vendor has extended support of some of this equipment more than once. But again, as I pointed out, the, the radios, the, the portables and the mobiles that the users have in their hands, will go off of support at the end of this year. Some of it's already gone off of support.
I thought the purpose of technology advancements was to make things last longer.
I've never found that to be true.
No.
Do we have, do we know of potential customers to join us? Other counties around?
I mean, we've had some conversations, I don't know that they're that serious or that close. We've also talked with Mercy about maybe joining together with Mercy EMS, so that we could find those efficiencies and share those costs as well. So I think that's probably more closely available to us than any of the, the county partners right now, I'd say.
Yeah, and there is another alternative that wasn't available three and a half years ago, and that's a state system, has recently gone P-25, that digital standard. And they may be looking for counties or other agencies to join that. I don't know where they're at in that implementation, but that could be something that you'd want to look at. If they have towers and sites in the county to support their network, it all depends on how they would say, okay, McCracken County, City of Paducah, come join our network. What does that look like? We're used to working with states, and there's different models. If you look at North Carolina, they'll say, yes, you can come use our network, buy the equipment, install it, and then give it to us, and the state will maintain it forever. So you get out from all the maintenance, but you have to buy it and put it in. You still have to buy the, the portables and the mobiles. There's no user fee, yet.
Could that assessment be part of the next steps, as you're thinking about updating costs? Maybe you could do an analysis of what the state's doing, to see if that...
Absolutely.
Is apples to apples?
Yes, ma'am.
I just had that thought, that might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, because that came up...
Three years ago, they weren't talking about P-25, and so now that they are, or they probably were talking about it, but it wasn't implemented.
Yeah, I, I think they've come a long way in three and a half years, and it, it's worth looking at. The upside is, you don't have to pay for some of the system control equipment. They already have big switches and control equipment that runs their network, you would leverage those. So that's a million, million and a half that you would not have to pay. The downside is, you lose some control, because you don't own those. They will dictate an upgrade schedule that you have to comply with. But again, is that worth a million and a half dollars? Could be. You'd still have to buy consoles, you'd have to buy, you know, subscriber radios, portables and mobiles. And you'd have to interconnect to their network. But again, how that works, there's other states where you can join their network, you buy the equipment, you put it in, but you're responsible for maintaining it. But you must take out a maintenance agreement with the same contractor that the state uses to keep that equipment maintained, and at a real vision level, that's consistent with the state. I mean, all reasonable things. And depending on the state, usually if you go to a digital system, there's a system administrator that takes care of adding new users, changing talk groups, the daily care and feeding of it. Some states say, you tell me what you want, and I'll do it for you. And other ones will say, here's a terminal, knock yourself out. You have a block of users this big, you have a block of talk groups this big, have at it. So it, it depends on where they're at, and how they're thinking about having additional users join. But I think it would, if they are implementing it, and there are sites in this county and surrounding this county, it'd be worth looking at.
I think it's important, too, that the, the folks understand that what we're talking about here is the, the number-one priority, and really exclusive to government, is providing for public safety, and that's what this is. The folks need to understand, of course, we're, both the city and the county are working toward improving the, the community through sports, through, you know, various attractions and things that occupy them. Some people will use a aquatic park, some people will use the greenway, some people use the soccer fields, but, but everybody benefits from a strong 911 system that works, and it works well. Not only the, the, we provide our responders, our emergency people, the police, fire, EMS, city and county, with good quality equipment that they know, and, you know, a call comes in, they can get it, they can respond, they get in trouble, they can call for help. You dial up 911, your house is on fire, or whatever, you will make darn sure that call is received and dispatched, and, so this is, this is ground-level, you know, basic priority government service here, and, and we, we've got to get it right. It's expensive, but it's not, not so expensive that we can, I think, afford to, to shirk and, and try to nickel-and-dime it. We want to be, you know, obviously careful and, and, you know, spend wisely. And we may, we throw around different kinds of cars to prepare this, too. I've heard we need a Rolls-Royce, and we don't need the Maserati, and, but we don't want the, the clunker off the back of the car lot either. And so we, we want good quality equipment to, to help our guys and gals that are out there working and protecting us, and that's what this is all about. It's very important.
Yeah, just want to echo some of that. For, for me, and, and we all took an oath, and our, one of our priorities is public safety. And, you know, we don't need the Rolls-Royce, but I tell me, talk to me about the part that makes sure all of our safety responders, there aren't any dead spots when they go in the buildings. Can we get that piece? Can we get that piece? Yeah, we can do that, well...
You can get very close, I mean, guaranteeing 100% coverage, no one would want to pay for that.
Well, as close as, as close as we can get, and we can afford.
Absolutely.
Right.
The study that we did provided 95% coverage for a portable on the hip of a responder anywhere in the county.
Okay, all right.
Now, that 5%, when we write it in the RFP, can't all be in one place. So that needs to be sprinkled over the entire county, so you can't have 5% chunk missing out of one corner. That is not acceptable. In-building coverage is harder to guarantee. If there are specific buildings you want covered, we'll write those into the RFP and say, these have to be covered. You figure out, talking to the vendor, how to sort that out.
So, well, when we send our guys, or our guys go, and ladies go into situations, there is a certain amount of security, and knowing that they're going to be able to talk to who they need to talk to.
Yes.
So that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. We, we owe that to them and our citizens to get that. We figure out a way, and I think any of us up here will, could make that argument, if we have to spend a little bit to get that done, as close as we can, because we don't want to be on the side of that. So for me, you know, we don't need, we don't have to have all the bells and whistles, but we want to make sure that we have the best 911 system that Paducah, McCracken County, I think our citizens deserve that. I think any reasonable person will understand that it, it may not be the best in the state, but it does what it needs to do for us and our citizens. So just to echo what the judge said, it's a, it's, it's, it's all about safety, it's all about the, the folks over in the 911 building, directing traffic, making sure that we can get folks where they need to be.
These numbers...
We totally agree with that.
These numbers are dated, but it looks like it'd probably be a little over a million dollars a year. I wonder how that compares with what we're spending right now, or budgeting for 911, and how that compares with the revenue that we have coming in.
Yeah, that I can't speak to.
We do have those numbers, we can send you.
Yeah.
We didn't bring them tonight for this discussion, I guess, but we have been talking about them in our working group, that we've been meeting since February, or March, or, yeah.
And all these systems were wrapped up together, because they all represent the, the PSAP or the 911 Answering Center. And, I mean, the city has gone through other projects as far as renovating the room, new, new desks for the operators, but that's outside of our contracts with you. But they've gone through a lot to improve the environment, as well as a new 911 telephony system, and a new CAD system, which is going to improve the response time and protect your citizens better. And a lot of the things that were done manually, as far as copying this data out of this system, sticking it into the next system, is going to be automated. So that possible human error element is, is removed from the equation. So again, all of this, with a new radio system, there should be some tie-in to the CAD system as well. So all these systems form this big bubble that help for protecting your first responders and your citizens, to get them help as fast as possible, and protect the first responders when they're doing their job.
I think that's important, that people understand, when you say 911, I think you think you're just making a phone call, why does this cost so much money? To just call something. So I think that's an education piece, we've got to get out there, too, that this is more than just paying for a phone line to get to somebody. It's the radios, the dispatch, it's all, it's a big, it's a lot, it's a lot.
Yeah, and if you toured it, you know what they sit in front of.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty impressive.
So when we switch, all of, all of these partners that are on our system will have to also switch, right? They'll have to have the upgrades and new equipment.
Yes. If you expect them on your new system, or they can stay where they're, depends who you're talking about.
Like the Swift and Staley, the airport, school systems, I mean, they all pay, I guess they pay you the fee, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a decision you'll need to make. If you want them on your system, they can come on the system. Do they buy their own radios? Up to you. Does the increased interoperability increase safety for your, your county and the city? Yes. Because now you can talk to each other, there's more features and functions that don't exist But again, that, that's your decision, whether they come with you or not.
I guess, and their decision, if they want to...
Yeah, exactly.
I would say it'd probably be more their decision, but I guess the caveat to that question is, if we have to have a, a fee or a tax raised to fund it on our side, and we go to Paducah City School and say, hey, you want on this, it's going to cost X, then it's going to go right up the ladder, everybody's going to raise taxes, not just us, or charge fees for 911, so you could have a snowball rolling downhill, it's going to get very big.
Good point. There is an inventory in the full report that you did back in 2015 or 16, of how many radios each of those systems have on it. So you can do some rough math pretty quickly and find out, it's say they bought the $1,000 version of it, not the $3,500 version, times whatever they have, you could get there really quickly to understand what the kind of investment would be. You had that earlier, we looked at it, but they have to be updated, because I don't know what the numbers are.
Some of the agencies and organizations are already buying, updating their radios that they have now, that would be compliant with the new system, so they're already doing that. I know we have internally, the fire department's been doing that for over the last several years, updating our radios, make sure they're compliant. Also, we talked a little bit in the meeting today about how McCracken County schools are purchasing new radios that'll be compliant as well. So I think everybody's working independently, moving towards the radios they need, we just have to provide the backbone to support their radios.
Yeah, and if it's helpful, we can break it out, how much the subscriber units cost by agency. So if you want schools broken out, if you want engineering Public Works broken out, if you want the Park Rangers broken out, if you want Concord Fire broken out, Mercy, it was all lumped together before, we can break those out individually. And then how you show that, whether it goes under county-funded infrastructure, or to be funded by others, you can do that assessment as well. But we'll give you that information, we, we need some more information from you as to how you want to see it broken out, but we will give you that information, so you can make a better informed decision.
Do most 911 centers in other communities, are there Public Works part of that operation, or is it usually separate, or...
Yeah, I've seen it both ways, and if I had to call it, I'd call it 50/50. Because if you have a major event, major snowstorm or something like that, you want everybody where they can talk together, and be coordinated from one single location. And usually what we've seen in something this large of a system, is there'll be a talk group or a specific channel allocated for emergency. Everybody go over there. Or you, you and you go over there and talk. You can coordinate Public Works, if you're using school buses for evacuation, you can get them on board, as well as law enforcement and fire. So there's always talk groups that you want to configure for essentially emergency use, and probably multiple ones. But that system in a trunked environment, you can create as many talk groups as you want, recognizing that in an eight-channel system, you can have eight conversations going on at once. Or in a phase-two system, where we proposed five channels, that would give us eight channels, or eight time slots, or eight conversations to go as well. If we kept all eight channels and converted it to phase-two, that'd give you 14 simultaneous conversations could happen. So there's a lot of permutations here, and we can discuss that when we get into the details.
As part of your study, when you look at numbers of calls from different agencies and, and dispatching, do you recommend staffing patterns as part of your study, or is that something beyond what you do?
That was not asked for as part of this RFP, but it is something that we can do. That would be a new request and new requirement, but we are certainly capable of doing that.
I've read about, different things about staffing, that, you know, there's good, there's positives and negatives to having Public Works being involved, because sometimes somebody could be handling a routine issue with a, the engineering department, when there's another call coming in that may be delayed a little bit, it's more of an emergency, and, and I don't, I don't know if you recommend that you have one person is totally dedicated to doing the Public Works, and then three people answering the emergency calls.
Yeah, as far as how you handle Public Works, that's an operational issue, and that would need to be discussed with the city, the county, and Public Works. Usually what we've seen is the system uses, or Public Works is on the system. Usually what we've seen is the system uses, or public works is on the system. And the telecommunications, the dispatchers can access that system. Usually it's run out of a, a different facility with a different small radio where they do their dispatching and coordination. And it's not a day to day operation of the telecommunications. Their job is to answer the nine one one call, work with CAD and get the response going.
Which is the way it is now, which nine one one is specifically for dispatching emergency calls. You're making me think about this in a different way though, seriously, because the radio, even though we're talking about it in light of nine one one, the radio is more than nine one one. It's the backbone of all of the communication across the agencies. When you look at page five, it breaks down the different agencies and they actually have nine one one communications as one of those agencies. And so that's making me think about this a little bit differently, that the radio portion isn't just for nine one one. That is the primary purpose. We do this and do it well, but there's a lot of other purposes also. So it's a little bit bigger than I think I had imagined originally. And also, it's interesting because Commissioner Abraham and Judge Clymer talk about the safety of our residents and ourselves every single day and our first responders daily. But the other piece of this story, and I'm looking at Jerome Mansfield in the audience, is emergency management services. And the ice storm is a really good example of when our community struggled to communicate and our first responders and our whole teams were trying to figure out how to coordinate that emergency. And so having, and I think you just went to a training today talking about how we make sure we're prepared for emergency disasters. And so having this backbone and this interoperability across all these agencies that matter, actually, if you look at that, when we have emergency disasters, really it's like a second tier reason to be talking about this and making sure we have a good system. So it's more than just the daily phone call that someone's making to, to nine one one.
Exactly. There's three critical pieces for nine one one response, the telecommunications and the nine one one CPE equipment, the telephony, the CAD system and a radio system. But you're exactly right, the radio spills over into everything. And if you have a major event, an ice storm in your example, you want those multiple agencies being able to talk to each other. And whether they're on the same system, you can also do it if they're on different systems as long as all those things end up in your dispatch center and you can physically cross patch them. But if they're all on the same network and the same system, life is so much easier. You can dedicate specific talk groups for those responses.
And plan a little bit better, it seems like also.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think also it'd be wise for us to start including some of this information if, if we've not already. Of course, I've just been in office for 11 months now, maybe you've already been doing this, but with those other agencies that are not directly under city, county direct supervision and have their own taxing districts and make them aware of what's going on if, if we're not already, maybe we are. But particularly to identify the things that we're learning as we learn them, the thing like the, the thousand dollar radio will be as sufficient for them as the $3,500 radio. And so that does at least a couple of things. One, perhaps they would not at some point say, we've got to raise our tax rate by $30,000 because we need 10 $3,000 radios. Now you need 10 $1,000 radios. But also, you know, just actually they'd want to be included in the discussion, have the information. And it may be at some point we're going to be asking them to, to pay a fee to participate in this. And so I feel like if they're included as we go along, they'll feel like they have some more ownership and maybe be more willing to, to pay into it, buy into it than if we just go it alone and make the decision. You know, Jerome Mansfield, of course, our EM director's here tonight and he and I worked today, today together on some information related to this. And so he knows about it. Let's see, I saw Jeremy Jeffrey, yeah, from the ambulance service. I asked him about, he's not, he said he might come or send somebody. There's not anybody from the ambulance service, I guess. But as you said, that's one potential member of this as well, that maybe they would be, there'd be a three-way deal on this city, county and, and ambulance. So that's a possibility.
Let me ask a procedural question of the city manager just as. For, for the most part, your public works agencies, they're not constantly communicating with nine one one. They communicate with one another, but if they have an emergency and doing certain procedures is when they, when they communicate with the nine one one center. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's not a commonplace thing to communicate directly to the PSAP, no. And a lot of what we do basically is phone anyone.
Right. So it doesn't really take a lot of time of a dispatcher to work with, somebody had told me, for example, that if somebody's going into a confined space, they'll notify nine one one as a, just as a safety precaution so they know somebody's in there. I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but then when they come out, they, you know, there's some kind of monitoring just for safety reasons. Is, is that correct or incorrect?
Well, I'm not going to speak to that. I'm not for sure if that's correct or incorrect, but I can tell you this, it doesn't put a large workload on our PSAP.
My mind doesn't take a whole lot of time of the nine one one centers to deal with those.
We have a lot of radios that tap into the system or have access to the system. That does not mean they use the system.
Well, just like your, your survey, I think, I wrote down, I guess I got it right, I think engineering, you had said, city engineering department, it's 75 radios. Some are mobile in car and some are portables.
That's public works.
Overall.
Oh, that's public, public works. Okay. How'd that sound like?
Refuse and...
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's, that's public works, including solid waste.
Yeah.
And so they've got a, a person in the office.
They talk back and forth, talk to fleet as well.
Yeah. But then, and then they communicate to the office and between each other. They don't go to... What else we want to talk about?
I don't know. It's been an hour. Any other questions, comments, concerns? No? It's been good. Good, get on the same page. Thank you for being here.
Oh, certainly welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you for the update.
Certainly welcome. Yeah, let us know where we can help somewhere.
Okay. Sounds good. Shall we wrap up?
Yeah. If we have anything else.
I think so. We can't talk about anything else. This is a called meeting. We only have one agenda.
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn for the city.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Here, do this.
I do that?
Yeah.
I want to know why my chair is...
So you're the same height as me?
It's lower than your chair.
It's a trick.
Motion to adjourn. Someone there.
Go, Mike.
Second.
Don't worry.
Okay, so.
All right. [laughing].